Morning. This is a work session of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Our Chair Jeff Robins is unavailable at the very moment, but may be joining us a little bit later. And for those of you that haven't participated in the past, I see we have, we're now to about 13 participants. This is just very informal, no suit jackets and first names. And so we're just going to be talking about some of the things that we're thinking about and, and planning. It may be a very short meeting. Kyle, did you have anything in particular that you needed to share?
No, I don't.
I just wasn't sure. Since you, since we're actually on the screen, I, I, I wasn't sure if that was to let us know that there was something else that we needed to work on, but. Okay, so I think. One item that we had is our upcoming informational docket. Oh, here's Julie.
Morning Julie.
Morning Julie.
Morning. Sorry, I turned my video off instead of my audio on.
No problem. We, I was just kind of just getting us started. As you probably know, Jeff is going to be possibly late. Did you have anything that you needed to share?
I don't think so. I mean. I think the only thing is kind of, kind of circling back to financial assurance and. What does more information look like and what, how does that impact the process? You can imagine that I probably get, if not hourly, daily questions about when are you going to have this rulemaking? And I keep telling them, you should ask the five people who are now in charge. That being said, starting to understand what, what this path looks like so that people can plan vacations or whatever is, would be helpful for me.
Okay, yeah. Would it be helpful if we, I know I always keep like, let's create a Google Doc, but will it be helpful to create a Google Doc where we can put, submit our questions? And possible presentations and anything else that we want to kind of see if we can glean before we head into a rulemaking and then. Julie, I'm kind of, I, I think I would like to understand too. It's if I'm understanding the process correctly, we all have to come up with. A draft that goes out for folks to respond to as part of rulemaking, right?
I'm going to answer that in the words that I know, which is CRGCC needs to prepare a set of rules. And a draft statement of basis and purpose that's submitted to the Secretary of State. To be noticed as the formal official kickoff of a rulemaking.
So we need some sort of a straw dog for people to respond to instead of just kind of this dialogue that we've been doing so far to get better information.
Yep. And, and so the way that I've envisioned it is that at some point you all say, Julie, you've heard from stakeholders, you've heard from our questions. Go write some rules and try not to screw it up too badly, right? And then I'll put together a draft set of rules and a draft statement of basis and purpose. And get that noticed and then the process can take over from that point in time forward.
So are we allowed to give you feedback before you submit the straw proposal or are we?
I would envision. I would envision talking to you individually about questions that you've asked, what I've heard from you to try to understand your thinking and, and perspectives. And then I'll use my best judgment to put together a draft and it won't be perfect, but. And I would expect changes to it both through. Information brought forward by the parties, right? That's the point of the rulemaking is for them to say. Murphy totally screwed this piece up, right? Because of X, Y, and Z, and we want you to think about it in this vein. And, and equally to allow you to say, thanks, that was a good try, but here's what I really think. And then let you all work through, really take the time to work through party, party submittals, public comment. And come up with what the best sets of rules are. But to me, I need to put out a draft set of rules and statement of basis and purpose to kick it off. And I, I don't want to do that in a way that would appear in any way. That each of you had already made up your mind about what the outcome is. So I really want to own that work product. I want it to be mine. I want the mistakes to be mine.
Yeah. So sorry, I'm sorry if other commissioners want to jump in, please. So are we? Are, are we anticipating after we get additional information and maybe some presentations that we want? One more discussion with the commissioners, for example, and I'm making this up. Priya wants individual bonding for. Whatever, every single thing and Karen wants blanket bonding instead, or I want a sinking fund. So are we, are we able to have one more conversation where the commissioners can maybe see if we have some similar ideas? Or if we're very divergent on certain things?
I would be very nervous about that and I'm not your lawyer. Again, because I think.
Maybe I should ask Kyle.
Right. I, I think the best thing that we can do is have you go and be thinking about this. And of course you have your own opinions, but. The point is, is to walk into this with an open mind to hear what all the stakeholders and parties have to say about it. And the rulemaking process itself. Kyle, how, that was, that was my perspective. Kyle, if you want to chime in, please do.
Thanks Julie and Karen. Yeah, I, I think Julie's on the right track on this. I mean, ultimately. This commission won't make a final decision until. After the notice and draft rules have been issued and after you hear from all the parties and after a hearing and, and, and all of that. Certainly. You're, you're forming your own opinions right now after having seen informational. Gone through the informational docket and read things and done your own research and, and talked on your own with stakeholders. And that's a process that's going to continue, you know, all the way through up until when you make a final decision. But it is important, even though you may express, you know, an interest in a particular idea at this stage. The fundamental essential aspect is that you remain. You know. Open and haven't conclusively made your mind up until you get to the end of that hearing. So. Yeah. And I, the other point I want to make is Karen, you mentioned the straw dog rules. I also want to point out that the mission change rulemaking was, was atypical. In the sense that there was. There were, there was a white paper and then there was a straw dog set of rules and maybe even trying to go back to the mists of time. Maybe even a second kind of set of straw dog rules for some of the rules before the actual draft rules were noticed. That is atypical, certainly for this commission and I think in general to have multiple sets of draft rules before even the notice. Of rulemaking is issued. It doesn't, the APA doesn't preclude that process and it was fine to do it in mission change. But it's not, and I don't, I don't think a straw dog is being contemplated here for financial assurance either. The straw dog was, the intent of the straw dog were rules prior to the formal notice. For additional public feedback. And that's not being contemplated.
Okay.
Financial assurance thus far.
Okay.
Or at least I haven't heard of it if it is.
What's the stakeholder process after the draft comes out?
The stakeholder, the process is the formal APA rulemaking process. So once the notice is the formal initiation of the rulemaking. Once the notice comes out, there may be early stakeholder meetings and Julie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the process has been in the past to have. Sort of a couple of, of stakeholder meetings. The general process is the notice comes out. A hearing officer gets involved and the hearing officer starts setting some dates. The first date, the first deadline is for the, and the public to declare filing notice of their intent to be a party. That creates the line between the public who may still submit public comments and a party to the rulemaking. Who may submit the formal response to the draft rules, written response to. The other parties' responses to the draft rules, written testimony and actually appear at the hearing as a party and make presentations and have witnesses, et cetera. So that's the first deadline after the notice is. Notification that someone wants to become a party. Then the deadlines are for all those written submissions. Then you have a hearing. It has been the process in the past. And Julie, I can't remember actually if the. Stakeholder meetings happened before or after that party status deadline?
It's variable.
Okay. It, the APA doesn't, doesn't get that specific, but I know that it's been our process in the past to have some early meetings, informal meetings with stakeholders.
We, we being staff, right? Because historically that has not included commissioners.
Yeah, sorry Julie, please go ahead.
Historically commissioners have attended, but not participated in those stakeholder meetings. They are open. The stakeholder meetings, there's kind of two calibers of stakeholder meetings, right? Like I've always had individ, meetings with individual groups of stakeholders. But there have also been large publicly, anybody can come. Stakeholder discussions. And, and I think the stakeholder discussions we're talking about right now are that broader, very public category. Right Kyle?
Yeah.
Is, is what we just did. You know, with the informational hearing is, does that not count? Is it supposed to be something that is more, as you said, sort of staff led? With those. Stakeholder meetings?
Well, it, I mean, I, it counts as a stakeholder meeting, I think. And maybe in both the APA and our, and our own rulemaking rule. Contemplate stakeholder meetings. I think the meeting that you just had for over the last couple of days would certainly count. As, as one of those meetings. An informational docket is not required by our rules or the APA. Some stakeholder input pre-notice. Before I go too far down this road, I want to make sure I'm saying this right. So I'm looking at. Commissioned rules now. Give me one second. Sorry everybody.
And I also just want to, I don't mean to say that we're done, you know, because we did that. I just meant to say that we are, I just wanted. Know if that sort of is considered part of our stakeholder engagement process.
Both our rule 529 and the APA require that any state agency and then the commission for our rule. Establish a representative group of stakeholders for a rulemaking. The APA certainly requires it after the notice of, of rulemaking. Our rule 529D as in DOG. Specifically says prior to the notice of proposed rulemaking, the commissioner director will establish a representative group of participants. In my view, the informational docket that you'd hearing that you just conducted satisfies that requirement.
Right.
So you are not required, in my view, to do anything more with that representative group of stakeholders. Prior to issuing a notice of rulemaking with a draft set of rules. As well as a draft statement of basis and purpose. On the other hand, you aren't precluded from conducting additional informational dockets or additional stakeholder outreach or, or informal meetings or whatever you want to do.
And that. That notice of hearing, at that time, do, does the draft rules and statement of basis and purpose have to be? Daylighted or is that notice happen and then those rules can continue to be worked on?
So the, the notice. Is daylighted. The notice is the document that you've all seen before that alerts the, the public. That this agency is conducting a rulemaking and this is in pretty general terms, so it can be as specific as desired. The subject of that rulemaking. The APA requires in addition to that notice being going out, that there have, that there be a draft set of rules and a draft statement of basis and purpose that go out.
At the same time.
At the same time. And that, that is, that would be public. The, the draft rules and the statement of basis and purpose can change. As much or as little as you all, the commission thinks they need to throughout the formal rulemaking process, getting to the ultimate set of rules. As long as. It stays within the subject description in the notice. So in other words. There is a provision of law that in case law that states that you do, you do have to stay within the notice subject of the rulemaking. You can't say, we're going to hold a financial assurance rulemaking and then start changing. You know, the 400 series rules that have varied, that have nothing to do. You have to let the public know so that they can prepare. And that they can decide if they want to participate as stakeholders. And the way you do that is through the notice. Which is also supplemented by the draft rules and the statement of basis and purpose. That. Yeah, but that is to answer your question, John, all daylighted when the notice is issued.
So maybe I can make a suggestion that, and it's just a thought. That between now and Wednesday, if we wanted to create, and maybe that's too short a timeline, but I'll just throw it out there between now and Wednesday. Perhaps if we wanted to do a Google Doc or. You know, get our thoughts together, we could have a discussion on Wednesday. Or perhaps Friday around what that timeline is going to look like moving forward and what works for you Julie. As far as. Time necessary in order to develop that draft and that statement of basis and purpose, draft rules and statement of basis and purpose and. Maybe we can start to hone in on some, some calendar scheduling around it.
I would, I'd be supportive of, of kind of having a, a sit down on Wednesday or next Friday to talk about that scheduling. For me next week, I've already scheduled a handful of, of stakeholder reach outs, meetings to follow up on some of the things we heard last week. And then some, some questions I'm going to have for, for Julie and for staff, maybe for Kyle as well. That result from that and that I've pulled out from, from last, from yesterday's and Wednesday's. Information. And so I, I just want to make sure that, that we kind of, that we put some, some bounds on it. Cause I don't think I'll be ready to, to share ideas or to give any kind of, you know, even informal. Direction to Julie in terms of the draft rules as early as next Wednesday. I would, I would suggest that might be another week or two behind that. I don't know if anyone else is thinking the same thing, but I just kind of want to make sure that's, that I'm saying that out loud.
I'm thinking even further than that because I feel like it's going to take a while for us to get some of the things that we've, at least some of the questions that I have heard. I don't know if repetitively is the right word, but, but there's, there's some themes, I think, from commissioners about. More information that we wanted. And then I think if our anticipation is that we're going to have some people come present to us about what they've been doing or. What people have highlighted as best practices. I, I don't think I'm going to be ready to put out like, this is what I want the draft to look like for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't actually suggesting that. I was suggesting just trying to get. Stuff generally calendared as far as putting some bounds around it. Because I do think a couple of things, at least what I'm hearing is our attorney is telling us that, you know, it's not. That we're going to be getting together as a group and providing clear direction to Julie as far as what we want to see. That's either going to happen individually. Between each of us and Julie, or she's going to interpret. Some of the conversations that are, are questions that we've asked different stakeholders. Through the informational docket as well as perhaps some, some future informational sessions. And so I think probably some of this onus is on us to do. Some of this data and information collecting like, like Bill said he was doing. Although I do think there may be. Some presentations that could be given that would benefit all of us that, that I may or may not be thinking of right now, but. There may be some benefit to at least starting to get stuff generally calendared, even if it's calendared quite a ways out, right?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, that overall and, and you know, just to echo what Bill and Karen said in terms of. You know, having better ideas of, of what. Concepts and things I like or, you know, want to see. It's probably going to take a couple of weeks to just sort of digest and. And I've also got a couple of meetings that I'm in the process of scheduling for follow-ups as well. And so, but that said, you know, maybe at least we could get kind of this, a second informational. Hearing on the calendar for some of these things that we want to hear more about. Sometime in the next, you know, month or so. And then. If we're still thinking kind of, you know, another month or two after that for the actual rulemaking. You know, that sounds good. And I guess the only other thing that I would say is. I think it was good that we spread the party presentations over two days and tried to aim for around a half day. But if we could, when we're building the agenda, just build in that question and answer time. So that we can, you know, sort of see like. Party one, 15 minutes of Q and A, party two, you know, knowing that some of them, we're not going to ask any questions and others. You know, we'll have more than 15 minutes or something like that, just so that we can better sort of plan and know how much time we're going to need and not have to adjust. The days on the fly, if that makes sense as much.
It does. And we did try and, and. So we're, I'm still trying to get to know how you guys cadence, right? And trying to be fair to all the participants in terms of allocating enough time for presentations and questions. And Angelica and Elias really took a, took a strong cut at that. And so when we kind of, anyway, we, we did try and we will continue to refine that.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just, I'm just thinking like, if that would help, you know, to actually plot out 15 minutes or whatever per. Party that it might just. You know, help the whole thing kind of. Line out a little bit better and definitely not trying to be critical. I think we were.
I have to use the restroom every 45 minutes between 8:00 AM and.
I need snacks. Yeah, snacks, snacks are important. Could I, can I segue into something else if folks are? Something totally apart from financial assurance? No, but down a different path. So I just want to make sure that. Everyone's given enough input into like kind of how we will see things playing out schedule wise. Okay, so my next question, and I don't expect it to be answered today, but Kyle, it's going to be one of my questions. For follow-up is, so I feel like a lot of folks said. You should only do bonds per well and only those. But I feel like statutes allow, provides for. Other mechanisms for financial assurance. And I would like some clarity around that. Like I don't. I guess deep down what I'm asking is, I don't think the commission has the authority to say the only kind of. Financial assurance that we're going to allow, for example, I'm making this up again. Is individual well bonds, because I feel like the statutory language. Says that the commission. Is supposed to provide more than just one, but maybe I'm misunderstanding. And so as we make our way through this. Food for thought for you, Cod, like some feedback on. Whether we can even do that.
Commissioner McGon, I would offer that I think that people. Use bonds in a general term to be the same as financial assurance. And sometimes in the specific. Term in terms of like, it's a specific type of financial assurance and. There are like, that's one place where I think that we use the same word and mean different things at times in this conversation. And the other one is plugging and abandoning wells, right? Does that include reclamation or doesn't it? And, and we're going to have to work on being extremely precise about what we mean when we use those words as we move forward, but. In the five years I've been working heavily on this, I hear people use bonds when they mean financial assurance and they say P and A when they mean plug, abandon and reclaim. So. I, I would give a little latitude to our stakeholders on that and, and make sure that when we as a group are using it, we're, we're pretty precise about it. I like correct documents all the time. And whenever you see something that's super wonky because it says financial assurance, a plug, abandon and reclaim, it's probably because I had it, a chance to edit it. Yeah, so.
Sounds good.
May I break in for a second?
Yes.
I want to be responsive to Karen. Karen, I, you know, you've recognized, I think, a couple of things that are discussed in the statute itself. There's certainly a provision in the statute that says that the rulemaking must consider certain things. And there's also a provision in the statute that provides that an operator may submit. A different, a number of different kinds of, and I'll just group them all as financial assurance. I think this is an appropriate conversation for an executive session, maybe as we get a little bit further down the road and see different proposals. Formal proposals maybe from parties about what kind of financial assurance they favor. And propose. But certainly a good place to start for any rulemaking is what does the statute provide? And what does it allow for and what does it require? And just for everyone's reference, that's 3460106, sub-part. 13. Is where the financial assurance provisions primarily are included. I also want to clarify something. That, that the notice does, and the notice is also kind of that bright line for what begins, what constitutes the administrative record. For the rulemaking, so kind of pre-notice, it's all informal, you're getting good information and things like that, but the formal administrative record. Of the rulemaking is also that the notice serves as, as that demarcation as well.
So the, this informational docket that we just had would not be a part of the administrative record?
I don't believe so. It's good information for you. Obviously it's something that you can use to inform your opinions at this stage, but if we're talking about. You know, the, the legal administrative record and that is, the notice creates that line as well.
Bill, do you want to talk about? The presentation that you've put together? It looks really, really interesting.
Yeah, happy to. And I just want to make sure, yeah, I'm, we're going to find financial assurance, we'll move on from there.
Wednesday or Friday?
My vote's for Wednesday.
Good. Wednesday's good by me.
Sounds good to me. Sorry, what's happening Wednesday? I'm confused.
Calendaring the, the future of financial assurance rulemaking.
We'll talk about what, when we're, how we want to place things out. That's okay. All right.
We're going to plan how we plan.
Going to plan how we plan. Okay. I was about to say, we can talk about that a little bit right now, but I think that makes sense to wait till Wednesday. So, um, yeah, go for it, Bill.
Excellent. So on April 14th, we are going to bring in a presentation from staff and a presentation from a panel of six operators. Representing different areas within kind of two of the bigger oil and gas operating areas in the state. And so. And they're going to be talking about the interaction of surface development, surface rights and mineral rights. And so. I've, I've engaged on the front range, Oxydol Petroleum, Chevron and Crestone Peak Resources. And, and the reason I chose those three is. Based on size, based on area within the field and kind of their typical surface location, surface. Characteristics, right? You know, Chevron's a little more rural, Oxydol's a little more urban, Creston's a little more urban as well. And then over on the front range. We're bringing in Charis Operator, Charis Oil and Gas, Terra Energy Partners and Laramie Energy to speak about the, some of the unique. Aspects of surface engagement on the western slope. Now, in addition to the operators speaking about just their, the unique factors that they deal with. As they engage with surface owners, I'm asking them to explain kind of some of the underlying legalities and. And just kind of norms for, for practice in the field beyond just what's required of the rules. So we're going to be learning a little bit about things like severed estate, so split estate, the difference between. Surface, surface rights and mineral rights, some from a property perspective, which one's dominant and why and how. The accommodation doctrine as it applies to existing uses and otherwise. And so we're going to be hearing about that from, from that panel of six operators and from staff, each presenting for about 15 minutes. Although I don't expect each operator to take 15 minutes because there will be a lot of overlap in the questions. That, that we're asking of all of them. I've also asked them to coordinate amongst themselves and, and I'll be following up with that. Here next week, just kind of see how things are going, see if we can tighten that up and make sure that we have an efficient presentation and panel. And then of course we will be. Able and hopefully, you know, eager to pepper them with questions and dig a little bit deeper to understand. Really, you know, how things work in practice, right? Beyond just the rules, beyond just the law. And just really understand that as best we can. So, you know, if, if appropriate, and I, I think it will be unless Kyle jumps up is I'm going to share my screen for the questions that I've sent over to. The operators and to Mr. Jaron Lowe for that presentation. All the commissioners should, should have seen this already, but I think it might be beneficial for, for the public to, to see this as well. All the commissioners should, should have seen this already, but I think it might be beneficial for, for the public to, to see this as well. And, and Helica, it looks like I am disabled from screen sharing, can we fix that? Hearing Officer Amaro.
Yes, give me a second, sorry.
That's okay, thanks. I think when we get into this document that I'm about to show, you'll see that a lot of the questions that came up during one of our. Ready to share, okay, thank you. Some questions that came up from, from the commissioners as we had one of our work sessions a, a few weeks ago. That was kind of the, the baseline for this, and I added a, a bunch of other, you know, issues that I think may be pertinent to really fill the. You know, fill our knowledge gaps in, in understanding this, this. This matter. And topic, so I'm going to share my desktop. One moment, I'm having technical difficulties on my Mac. Oh, I'm terribly sorry, it's asking me that I'm going to have to quit my. My Zoom and re-enter in order to access that screen sharing. Does anybody have the ability to share it from the drive? The commissioner's drive.
Yeah, I think I could do that, let's see.
I apologize for that.
No worries. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Right, can everybody see that?
Perfect, thank you, Priya.
Yep, no problem, is it big enough? Do I need to, is that better?
Looks good on my end. And so you kind of, as I'm talking, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling to keep up, I'd appreciate that. Kind of as I mentioned, talking about the interaction of mineral and surface rights from a split estate perspective. Split estate just means, you know, the difference between. Or when the, the property rights are severed from the surface owner and the mineral owner and, and each has a different owner. So basically, what, what is it? How often does it occur across Colorado? Dominant and servient estate, meaning which, which rights control or, or have the access. The accommodation doctrine, which is a, a legal doctrine. Associated with kind of that dominant estate. Term and what are the limits and, and how does it really, how does it work in, in actuality and what happens when accommodation is impossible? Right, because that's something that, that sometimes happens. I want to talk about existing uses and the consideration given to existing uses. Between the surface owner and the mineral development and the operator. And then ongoing coordination, right, you know, not just the upfront consultation, but, but how does, you know, how does that, that coordination continue throughout the. The life of development. I want to dig in a little bit to how surface, how operators choose their surface owners. Or surface, surface locations, excuse me, and this is going to kind of dabble a little bit into alternative location analysis. And maybe give a little more color as to kind of what that process looks like internally for different operators. I imagine we'll hear from the western slope operators a little bit about the BLM engagement, the BLM on sites and the, how that implies. Or the implications of that on the choice of surface location. Again, we kind of talked about surface owner engagement and what that looks like, and then I'd like them to, to walk through a timeline of, of the typical development. And what it looks like from the time you engage with the surface owner or select the site. All the way up through the time that you're done with your operations there, so I'd like to know more about, you know, planning for development. The construction phase, the drilling phase, the completion phase, and then just a touch on the interim reclamation phase. So once, you know, that, that first swath of, of operations occurs and it goes to the well pad, what that looks like. Leaving, of course, you know, the, the more substantial detail for, for the info docket that Commissioner Nanjapa, that Priya's putting together. And so, you know, to ask some questions that have come up recently in some of the. In some of the public comments that we've heard about twenty-four hour operations. About the timing for, for drilling and completions, about how, how much of a gap occurs and, and why, why the timing needs to be the way that it is. So those are some things we'll dig into, I'd like to know more about surface use agreements, I think those are important. That's basically the contract between the surface owner and the operator for what occurs. And then surface owner consent requirements, this is going to be mainly from, from Greg, from Mr. Geronlow. But we'll also hear from operators as well and, and anything they can tell us. Focusing on upstream, but I may be asking for, for some midstream questions in there as well in terms of gathering lines. And, and other surface impacts beyond the well pad. And then, yeah, lastly is, is proximate surface owners, the engagement with proximate surface owners, which I think is an important point. In, in a lot of the development, especially on the front range, but also important on the western slope as well. And then some of the differences between utilizing fee or private surface from state and federal lands as well, so. That's what we're looking at, it's, it's a big list, it kind of, the, the questions. Are outlined in such a way that I wanted the questions to be precise, but I imagine the way the presentations will come through, it'll kind of consolidate a lot of this information. So it may not be as big of a presentation as it may seem. From my long list of questions, so we're expecting that on April fourteenth. About two hours of presentation total, and that'll leave room for some questions for us as well, and that's, that's what we're planning on. If there's anything that, that people listening in today think might be important or that other commissioners think might be important. Feel free to share them with me now or to send them to me privately, and we can see about incorporating those as well.
That's great, thanks, yeah. It's super comprehensive, I really appreciate that, there's a lot of good stuff in here. Yeah, and so if, if we also have anything additional, we'll just, just email you and, and see if it can be something that can be added.
Sure, yep.
Okay, great.
Hey, Bill. Sorry, John, please go ahead. Well, I, I just wanted to clarify something for my own purposes to prepare for, for this. And potentially answer questions, when we're talking about the service owner. We're talking about the service owner who owns the property where the surface location would potentially go.
That is correct.
Okay, and so when you, will you scroll that back down to the bottom for a second, please? That last right there, thank you, when is surface owner consent required? We are not talking about. The informed consent that is contemplated by Rule six oh four, for example. We're talking about just the consent of that service owner where the property or who owns the property where the location is proposed.
That is correct, Kyle, yeah, so, so it doesn't, it doesn't implicate. Any kind of setback rules or, or variances or any of that off ramps. It only contemplates the, the actual engagement with the surface owner on which the operations are occurring. And then, of course, you know, I'm adding a question about proximate surface owners as well, and so perhaps. Operators may want to share how they provide notice, you know, in neighborhoods or in the surrounding community. Or perhaps, you know, they, they may want to dive into how they may engage for informed consent on. On six oh four matters, but that's not the intent of, of this presentation.
Okay, thanks.
Makes sense, thanks for the clarity.
Hey, Bill, is this an appropriate informational presentation to talk about? This potential conflict that I think we've heard from a couple of different stakeholders between. You know, a mineral owner and leaseholder, surface leaseholder and. Housing developers or someone that, 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 that may want to use this land for other uses and how those. Interactions happen, or is that, is that better left for some other topic?
So I think that could be an appropriate question to, to pose to operators who are, who are coming before us because. You know, the consideration for the surface location and, and the consideration of existing and perhaps anticipated uses. Should be part of that analysis anyways, and so they should be prepared to talk about that. I didn't specifically talk about that. I actually had considered adding some non-industry representatives for this information docket, but it kind of got. Too big from just an informational perspective to do that, so what I'm contemplating is that if we have additional follow-ups, perhaps from developers, perhaps from. Camro, the Colorado Association of Mineral Owners, and even perhaps from some community. Organizations, that, that may be a subsequent informational docket to, to continue to, to build on, on what we learn on the fourteenth.
Yeah, and I think like the home builders associations too would be interested, yeah.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think appropriate questions, I, I didn't, I didn't get that, get to that level of detail as I was. Thinking of this kind of framing it in a more technical perspective, but I think those are appropriate questions to, to address in Q and A.
Okay, thanks. This is great.
Sorry, Bill, may I jump in for one more second?
Go for it, Kyle.
Thanks, and I just want to alert the commission to the fact that the act does contain provisions regarding accommodation. The reasonable accommodation doctrine is somewhat codified by the legislature in the act itself. At thirty-four sixty-one twenty-seven.
So you're saying we should review that prior to the informational docket?
It might be something you're interested in when we talk about accommodation.
Right.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks again, Bill, it, it really does look great, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the presentations. Yeah, this is, this is really good, anything else on this from anyone? All right. I suppose we could maybe quickly go around and see if anybody has anything to share or. Unless there's any other major topics that people wanted to raise. All right, hearing none. Let's just go around, I guess, Bill, did you have anything else beyond this?
No, you know, I, I just wanted to say thanks again for, for all the, all the contributions we had over the last two days, very helpful. And, and also, you know, thanks for the stakeholders who, who continue to reach out and, and add clarification, I know. That these are big topics that we addressed, they're big policy issues, and there's a lot of considerations with a whole spectrum of options. And I just really appreciate people being willing and, willing. And, and interested in engaging in, in, in having questions about that, right, and really trying to dig into to find the right best answer, so. That's all I got.
Thanks, Bill, yeah, I completely agree, Karen.
Oh, ditto for me, just, yeah, it's just, it was amazing amount of material that everybody has provided and. Like I said, I just think there's a lot of food for thought here.
Yeah, definitely, John.
I don't have anything else to add on this, I will just give folks a heads up that. The next three weeks, I've got a number of. Meetings set up with local governments to go over. Kind of updates from our mission change, rulemaking and. Letting folks know about the upcoming rulemakings and so. Next week, I'm meeting with Larimer County and Cheyenne County, following week, I've got Monazuma County, Route County. Yuma County, and then. I think in future weeks, we've got Dolores, we've got Pittkin, Peonya. I'm forgetting a bunch of them, but I've got quite a few on there, and then Jeff has, you know, an equal amount, and so we're really trying to get out there and. Connect with, with some of our local governments about what we've been doing and, and, and really be available for a dialogue and. To answer questions that they may have, so.
That's great. Julie, I just saw that you kind of turned your camera back on, did you have anything else you wanted to, okay. And Julie, I don't know, I know you had emailed us, I don't know if this is appropriate venue, just on sort of thinking ahead in terms of. Field trips, visiting not only sites but doing some distance community engagement once we're all. Vaccinated and safe and can come up with the right protocols, if, anything on that?
Not really, I was focused more on making sure we're starting to think about what our away hearing schedules look like, I think that when it comes to. Field trips or engaging the community, I kind of. And trusting you all to lead how, how and when we do that and whether it's individually or as a, as an entire body. I just needed a point person to be running, who's making sure if we're having an away hearing, who's traveling, do we have the right internet bandwidth? Who's in charge of hotels, like it's the mundane aspects of, of planning that I, I really. And fortunately Chair Robbins, I think, volunteered for that, so it's off my desk.
We need to have like a, a, a future work session on that to make sure that we're all on the same page, or you think Jeff's just rather?
Um, I think that we talked about kind of where we want to go and detailed that at one point in time, and I think that's a pretty good go by. But, but I don't want to. Speak for all or for Jeff either. As you want to continue to revisit that, do it.
Maybe a check-in might be nice and maybe trying to talk with each other about. I mean, I don't know what our goal is, but maybe enough folks will be all be vaccinated and we'll all feel comfortable. Toward the end of the summer, beginning of fall for us to. Tentatively put on the schedule. An away game. And. Talk about where that might be.
Yeah, that sounds great, and I think. At one point we even talked about like maybe even over three or four days where we go to a couple of different. Places and, and communities. Kyle, just a question, I know obviously if we do an away hearing, it would be broadcast, et cetera, but if we're. Meeting with impacted communities, would we need to kind of do that on an individual basis? Or otherwise make it a public meeting if we are all involved?
That's an open meetings law question, and I think I probably want to know the specifics before I give you a definitive answer, I mean, the generally. Two or more commissioners discussing public business constitutes an open meeting is, as, as you all know, so. The best I can do right now is say, when you have more details, let's have a more detailed discussion about how exactly that needs to. To happen.
Okay, sounds good, I mean. And generally, if we're mostly sort of listening and, and just hearing kind of. Concerns or questions or things like that, are we, would that fall into the?
Well, again, um, let's talk about the specific purpose of the meeting and, and that kind of thing, because I think. What I don't want to do more than anything, certainly, but our main goal is not to, to comply with. Or to comply with a meetings law, I think the other thing is we want to provide some flexibility. In regard to participation as well, so.
Okay, fair enough. All right, that sounds good, and for me. The informational docket that Bill alluded to that I've been working on is the interim and final reclamation, as you all know. There are some questions that are in the commissioner's drive right now for you all to just take a look at and react to. I haven't looked in the last couple of days, if, if you already have done that. But we have time, I think we're aiming for April twenty-fourth at this point, and it's, looks like as of now primarily a, a staff presentation, but we're. And just discussing kind of the current status of how things are done. And so we're looking at the potential for any additional presentations, and that's again, where maybe some feedback from any of you. Could be helpful, otherwise. Apart from that. I've had, I've just been trying to connect back with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and. Talking to them about a couple of different things, and one thing that may be sometime in the near. Or in one of their next commission meetings would be a presentation from one of us or a combination with. Maybe a few of us are in their public meeting about specifically the wildlife rules since. Julie had presented that that was coming last spring and to their commission, so just a follow up. So just a follow-up on that now that we're in the implementation phase and kind of thinking about, or, you know, hearing any questions that they may have or, or ideas or thoughts that they may have in terms of the way the rules intersect going forward. So we'll definitely keep you all posted as that develops. I don't, I don't know if they have a, I don't know when their next hearing is, is scheduled. I'm sure it's probably up on their calendar already, but it, it may be, it, it may not be for a few months, if even longer. So that's all I have.
I'm sure that they would love to talk about something other than wolves.
Yes, I'm sure. All right. Anything else from anyone? Great. All right. Well, I think we, we don't need a formal adjournment, adjournment, right? So I think we're, we're all to say Happy Friday, Happy Easter, Happy Passover to all of those celebrating, Happy Ramadan, and just thanks to all, and we will see you on Wednesday.
Have a good weekend. Everyone have a good weekend.
Nice weekend, everybody.
Thanks.